Thank you, sir. Nope, we've got a forum.
I'll call this city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the open forum. At this time, I would ask Mr. Blake Hopkins to come forward and address the council. Mr. Hopkins, could you please sign in, give your address? And you've got about three minutes to make your presentation, sir.
My name is Blake Hopkins. I'm a senior project manager with Aon. In terms of address, we're office at 901 North Third Street in Minneapolis.
Can you speak directly and straighten up?
Name is Blake Hopkins. I'm a senior project manager with Aon. I'm here tonight just primarily to give an update on the Seasons Park acquisition. You may recall that we were here at your April 25th council meeting along with some of our leadership team. That was right after we entered into the contract to acquire the site. We do have 120-day due diligence period, so we're about halfway through that now. So it seemed like a good time to come in and give an update on what's taken place so far, as well as what we're expecting over the next couple of months. So really with these transactions, what we typically focus on, there's sort of three general areas. The first and foremost is sort of residence and community engagement and outreach. So we have had a couple meetings with the residents. We did have a meeting here at the Partnership Academy in May. And then also in June, we did a tour of an Aon property with the residents, where we had about 50 or so residents. We did a Q&amp;A session and did a tour of an existing Aon property. We've also done inspection of the physical condition of the site. That's an important part of our analysis to see really what the physical condition looks like. So once we take ownership, we know what the improvements will need to be. We've done several third-party reports, including a physical conditions and needs assessment. Aon staff has also been through all 422 units. So we'll take all that data and we're putting together currently a scope of work, which will be completed after we take ownership of the site. And then the third item is probably the item that takes up most of our time day-to-day, and that's the financing piece of it. Probably the largest piece of the financing package is an existing Fannie Mae loan. So we're assuming that loan on the property. We also have an equity partner who we've entered into an agreement with, who will provide equity to the project in addition to that Fannie Mae loan. And then we've also had meetings with public entities such as the state of Minnesota, Hennepin County, City of Richfield staff about ways that public entities can participate as well. So it's been a lot of work over the last two months. We anticipate probably a lot more work this summer. But we are confident that we'll close probably end of August, early September is probably our timeline for closing. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, thanks for your time and we'll look forward to continuing to, you know, provide updates to the council and then looking forward to working with the city after we take ownership going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. I can assure you that we appreciate the update and I'm sure the citizens appreciate it as much or more than we do. So once again, thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
One more item on the open forum, Susan Rosenberg. Ms. Rosenberg, you know the drill.
Have to pardon my appearance. I've been out in the garden because it's the garden tour coming up, July 22nd. My name is Susan Rosenberg. I am the co-chair of the Richfield Beautiful Garden Tour and we have been doing this since 2003. Mary Olafson and I, we feel like this is a gift that we give to the community of Richfield and we have the Garden Club sponsoring this. And so this year, we have seven gorgeous gardens, six stops, which means that we have adjoining gardens this year. So there are seven. And this year, we really are, they're interesting because we have a lot of yard art. And in fact, there is one on the east side that has a vehicle halfway buried in the garden. But it's so cute and you'll just love it. It's just so much fun to see the creativity that has come along with these gardeners this year because they have used really interesting vessels to display their flowers. So it's July 22nd, from 1 to 5. These gorgeous maps are going to be in the liquor stores, the community center, Woodlake Nature Center and right here at City Hall for sale for $5 each. Where else can you have so much fun for $5? Never. But the best part about this is that you get to vote for your choice and the ballot this year is right on the map. So it really makes it really slick and really simple. And it's just really fun. And one, I just want to talk about one added asset that we have this year. I think many of you knew Joe Krasaniac. He was a gardener extraordinary. He lived over by, on West 76th Street and he was dearly loved by all of us. And Joe passed away early this year. And so what we decided to do is to have the Joe Kay Award. And what this award will be, will be given to one of the gardeners that really promotes something for their neighborhood and really is an asset for their neighborhood. And you know, this comes along when you talk to these people, especially when you start talking to the neighbors and the people that have nominated them. So we'll have the Joe Kay Award and we're going to be doing this on August 8th, when you folks, the first meeting in August. You'll, we'll have all the gardeners here, we'll give the awards and we'll have the Joe Kay Award. But anyway, it's this July 22nd from 1 to 5. And I think even with all the construction, it's going to be really a heck of a day. So rain or shine, because gardeners love rain. And so come and enjoy yourself. Thanks.
Thank you. I can, I can add that last year, members of the council had an opportunity to serve as host or hostesses at some of the, some of the gardens. And you know, you see them a lot and you go down, you look at the rose gardens and everything, but you look at what people can do with their own yards. It was absolutely incredible. And you told me about the car half parked in the lawn and everything. The creativity and the vision that some of these people have just amazes me. And it's a beautiful way to spend a Saturday afternoon because you just can't, you can't even appreciate it without being there and walking through the garden, so.
I think Mayor, former Mayor Kirschwood, he'd say, "You just never know what's in that backyard." And you don't. But anyway, come and find out.
Great. Well, thanks again. At this time, I'd ask you all to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask for a motion approving the minutes of the special joint city council Housing and Redevelopment Authority and Planning Commission work session on June 19th, 2017, the special city council work session of June 27th, 2017, and the regular city council meeting of June 27th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. At this time, we get to have our annual meeting with the Advisory Board of Health. The city council is benefited by having meeting with various commissions once a year and getting a report and an update on what the commission has done. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Christine Kloss, the Chair of the Board of Health.
All right. Good evening. And thank you Mayor Elliott and the city council members and Richfield citizens. Again, I'm Chris Close and I'm the Chair of the Richfield Advisory Board of Health. And we would also like to take this time to thank Maria Reagan Gonzalez because she is our council liaison and she comes and gives us updates. And she was actually a board member with us too. So we appreciate you, Maria. And we also appreciate Betsy Osborne. She is our staff liaison and she will be retiring and we thank you for your guidance. We appreciate you too. So I'm here today at night to present to you just some highlights of what our group has done in 2016 in regards to community involvement. And you all have the annual report in front of you. So one of the things we do is we always have a member serve on the Committee for the Richfield Public Schools Wellness Expo. We helped plan that event in, in 2016. It was the Ninth Annual Wellness Expo. It always takes place at the Richfield High School. It's free admission. They had over 1,000 people come in 2016 and it has about 50 interactive vendors that promote health and wellness. And along with that, the board donates outdoor toys that involve outdoor physical activity for the youth drawing. We also have a member serve as a liaison to the Richfield Bike and Pedestrian Advocates. That person usually helps out with the Nine Mile Creek Trail cleanup every year. And then they encourage residents to attend open house discussions surrounding pedestrian and bike safety. So we've been involved with them for six years. Rose Jost is here and she is our member that is on the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee, also known as Shaq. So that meets quarterly and she goes to those meetings. And it basically is the link between state health and local health. So she brings back updates and participates in those meetings. We also continue to support and learn about the tobacco ordinance change that happened in November 2015. So we were supporters of that and it's basically the ordinance that regulates the use of electronic cigarettes and then sets the minimum price for cigars. Another thing that we're involved in promoting is Open Streets at Penfest. So in 2016, we had three members spend the day at Penfest and they joined other Richfield commissions for the first time to encourage participation in city government and then inform Penfest attendees of the advocacy of these groups. And basically what we do is we provide healthy games and healthy snacks for the attendees that come by. Another thing we do every year is we promote the food safety awards and I was here presenting those not too long ago. So that basically recognizes eating establishments for their commitment to food safety and a clean environment. And again, this year's winners was Arby's and then Broadway Pizza. One thing that's really exciting is that Richfield, Bloomington and Edina are now an accredited public health entity. So we are only the fourth entity in the state to become accredited, right behind the Minnesota Department of Health, Hennepin County and Washington County. So that just gives more avenues for health information and grants. Also on here, we listed the tobacco and alcohol compliance checks for 2016. So there were two tobacco compliance checks and there were no failures. That's good news. And then there were two different alcohol compliance checks. So one, one place out of 35 failed in March and two out of 34 in November. So we have a high success rate. And so then I want to thank you again. We all love being on the board and we like being active in our communities. And so we thank you again for allowing us to serve Richfield. And if you have any questions, I can take them now if you have any.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you. This is just beautifully well-done, well-written. We don't have to strain to read it. I mean, you know, the font is great. There's not, you know, you can really, you can really, I think, digest what you've done when you put it in writing and presented it in such a manner. And I think it's really wonderful. And I, and you know, other commissions could steal this idea from you.
Well, thank you, Edwina.
Really, really beautifully done. And, and obviously, you know, you, you work hard and you work well together and appreciate you.
Okay, thank you so much.
If I could just add selfishly, really appreciate your participation in Penfest and as that continues to grow, it's really great to have your advocacy and your presence in helping to make that a vital event. So thank you.
Thank you. We like the commissions working together on that. That worked out well for us.
I would just like to thank you for, for keeping health and wellness at the front of the dialogue and, and keeping us aware of the services and the opportunities out there to maintain our own health and wellness and be monitoring and working to the betterment of the community as a whole. So thank you and all the commission members.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
And I'd also like to say thank you. And I am, as a public health nerd and professional, I'm just so proud of the public health, or the health advisory board. And I think everything that we all do on the council and in the city is public health and building healthy communities. And you guys help lead the way. And Richfield in terms of building a strong, healthy community and the work the Advisory Board of Health has done has really been a leader on many things, especially around tobacco, having high standards and qualities for our businesses and recognizing our businesses. And now I know we are working on also doing the same thing for smoke-free multi-unit housing and that's another thing that I'm very proud of. So thank you so much for your hard work. And Betsy, we are really going to miss you.
Thanks again. Next up on the agenda is council discussion, better known as Hats Off to Hometown Hits. And I believe Councilmember Garcia is going to lead us off this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to do this in three different parts. This is not a hometown hit, but I do want to mention that during the Fourth of July events, we had a shooting and a killing on Richfield Streets. Today with the services for Jonathan O'Shaughnessy. On behalf of the city council, on behalf of the city staff, we offer our heartfelt sympathies to Jonathan's family. We offer them our thoughts and our prayers and our support. The Richfield Police Department, Chief Jay Henthorn and his police force are, this is an open case, it's an ongoing case. And we look and they are working very hard on this. So I just wanted to extend our heartfelt sympathies. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I think you speak for all of us. Well said.
And then I'd like to go up, up front and, and kind of say something about our city manager. Now, I'd like Betsy Osborne to just stand over here. I told her she didn't have to speak, but I do want her to stand over here. You know, a few weeks back, our city manager, Steve DeVich, notified us that Betsy was going to retire. And I said, "What?" You know. And he said, "Yeah, she is. She's eligible for retirement." And I said, "And you okayed it?" And he said, "Well, she's eligible." And I said, "You okayed it without even saying anything to us?" And so, you know, naturally, he's not always on top of everything. But nevertheless, I think, you know, when it comes down to knowing Betsy, Mayor Pat Elliott and myself have known her for many, many years. And, you know, Betsy, we've got bad news for you. We're not accepting your, you know, you have to stay on. You can, you can leave whenever, whenever Mayor Elliott and myself are not on the council. You can leave then, okay? No, let me tell you a little bit about Betsy. She's been with the city for 38 years. I think she's been here longer than our city manager, Steve DeVich, has. She is the Environmental Health Manager. And this is some of her, her duties. And this is, this is a woman, I think, that has got a lot of patience. She has, she deals with the public. She deals with, you know, with all of us. And she really has done an outstanding job for the city. I mean, this is, this, she's an integral part of, of why Richfield functions the way it does. She is the Environmental Health Manager. That is her title. She works in, does licensing for health, for the, you know, and for restaurants and liquor. She's a public health administrator for the contracts with Bloomington. She's liaison to the Advisory Board of Health. She works very closely with community services officers and her direct supervisor is Jay Henthorn. One of the things that whenever we have a problem in the community, the first person we call is Betsy Osborne. And she knows exactly how to take care of problems. She is familiar with, you know, with the ordinances that, that, you know, that other folks have to comply with. She's familiar with, I think, the whole community of Richfield. And she's helpful, not only in working with us, but in working with the residents in order to see how we can work out what problems we have and how we can really continue to maintain Richfield to be a clean environment, a terrific city to live in, play in and work in. So, Betsy, we really want you to know that, you know, being that you're involved in health, you know, Richfield Liquor Stores sell, they sell grapes and they, and they put them in a bottle and make juice. It's called wine. So being health-conscious, I think, you know, Mayor Elliott and I and the council want to promote your good health. And therefore, we'd like to present to you, for you to enjoy in good health, some grapes.
No, I wasn't going to speak, but I have to remind Steve. I've been here so long, I remember when they had smoking in the last three rows of the council chambers. So we've come a long way, but thank you. This is, this job has been a blessing to me and I appreciate everybody's well wishes and I'll, I'll see you again. Thank you.
Betsy, you, you can't walk away just yet. I have to tell a little tale. Betsy, Betsy acknowledged to me that my younger brother was her first boyfriend. And, and it was as serious as you can get in seventh grade. But the passage from seventh grade to eighth grade, Betsy grew six inches my brother didn't. That ended the romance. And he hasn't grown since, so. But, but I, I know that he would wish he could really be here because I think he would probably tell the story better than I did.
Well, yeah, I just told him that I, I said, "You know, you and I were almost related because I had a long-term relationship in seventh grade with your brother." I said, "It lasted a week."
Well, I said that the growth spurt came on quickly.
He's a great guy.
Thank you much for your service. He is a great guy.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and, and then my third part of this is, you know, I, I got, my feelings were hurt at the last council meeting by Councilmember Howard when he said I was kind of discriminating age-wise and age bias and all of this stuff because I was promoting the summer programs for kids between six and 12. And he says, "We're, we're just talking about, you know, what about other folks in the community?" Well, I'm here to, to make things right for you, Councilmember Howard. I'm going to tell you today about the Richfield History Center, which is on 66th and Lindell. Now, we talk about Richfield and the amenities and all the great things we have to offer. I mean, this is why we're really a close community, because we're terrific. On the 19th of July, at the History Center, we will have, starting the back porch concerts. And we're going to have Katie Vernon Trio there and that's free. So you want to be there July 19th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Bring your chairs. It's going to be a lot of fun. And you'd be surprised, you know, there's the folks that, that go there. I mean, it's become kind of a real night-nit community. Then, also at the History Center, July the 29th, this is on a Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 PM, they are going to have also free old-time baseball games at the Lindell Field. When I say old-time, I mean from the 1860s. Those are the, that's the rules they're going to play with from the 1860s. So that was before our time though, you know. Yes. So, so we want to do that. We want to promote that. Then later on, we, we have at the History Center, once again, on the 29th at 7:00 PM. Well, this is, this is part of the History Center, but it won't be local, but this event will be at the VFW. But it will be called the One Hit Wonders at the VFW. You'll have appetizers, you'll have great music and it's $25, but it's a treat. I mean, it is really fun. And that's sponsored by Richfield Visions, the Elliott Law Offices, I think they're located somewhere in Richfield, and Sandall and Associates and TCF Bank. So you'll want to make sure you go to that. I've, I've been to those, to the events that they've had at the VFW and those are fun because they're not dull, traditional events. I mean, they're, they're really happening events. Then, at Oxford Park, on July the 11th, we'll have, this is for, for going back to kids, little children. We'll have July the, well, that's, that's just happening today, so that's out. But July the 18th, we're going to have, July the 18th, we'll have Bob the Beach Comer. And that's free. And then July the 25th, we're going to have the Minnesota Zoo, Zoo Mobile. And all those happen on Tuesday. So these are fun events. I mean, you can't get any cheaper than free. So, and now, my last thing here is you're invited, there's going to be a bench dedication at Woodlake Nature Center. That's coming up on July the 16th, from 1:30 to 3:30 PM. The bench will be, will be dedicated to three Richfield Pioneer Women. Betty Carr, Lois DeSantis and Gertrude Ulrich. These are women that, that, when Richfield was a village and then it became, you know, a city, these are women that were instrumental in making sure, for one thing, we got Richfield water. We have our own aquifers. The other thing is informing commissions, like the Planning Commission- like the Planning Commission, Human Rights. I mean, they were really instrumental in being very much part of guiding the city. And Lois DeSantis was the person that started what we now know as VEEP. And it was started at a local Richfield church. And VEEP continues to this day. It helps so many folks. It is a real success, community success, not only for us but for other communities it serves. Betty Carr and Gertrude Ulrich, many years ago, used to write a column for the Richfield Sun-Current. They would alternate in writing a column, which would kind of inform the citizenry of what's going on in Richfield and kind of keep them abreast of the good things that were done. So, it's really a salute to these three women pioneers who were so vital to what Richfield is today. So, I believe... Now, I was going to do the Richfield Beautiful, but Susan Rosenberg beat me to it, so... So, Mr. Mayor, I think that's all I have.
Thank you much. Councilmember Troutman, I spent four, four-and-a-half years having to follow Councilmember Garcia on hometown hits. Welcome to the party. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think in all those great events, there might be one. Did you mention tomorrow, the amphitheater, the St. Louis Park Community Band?
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow, at the amphitheater, which, if you haven't been there in the last couple of weeks, continues to develop with new little surprises. We've just installed some musical instruments into the amphitheater. They're great. It was fun. I went there last night with my wife. And just to see families kind of going from musical instrument to musical instrument, from the drums to the xylophones. And just you just watch families interact. I'm sure the architects would just love to see how our citizens are interacting with that space. I think it's beautiful. It looks great. It totally opens up Lake Richfield. So, that's great. Tomorrow, at the amphitheater, we're going to have the St. Louis Community Band that's going to be playing. So, it's going to be a free concert. It's going to be a great opportunity to come out there. The Lakewinds is right behind there, so you can come and get... They have the coffee shop there. They have carbonated kombucha on tap there that you can get. So, it's great. Grab something at Lakewinds and then come out and enjoy the music. The other hats off, I just found out a couple of weeks ago, I have a couple classmates from my time when I was in Richfield High School. One of them is going to be coming up. The Norgards are going to be coming up, and we're looking forward to hearing from them. But also, Justin Delzer, who's still a Richfield City employee, works for our liquor store systems. He's an amazing author. And he's published about a dozen, a half a dozen books. And more recently, has published The Buccaneer of Namaris. He's a fantasy writer. And so, hats off to Richfield High Schoolers and alums and to J.D. Delzer and his great creative work. We have folks just doing creative things and wonderful things here in Richfield.
Thank you much. I'm not going to point fingers at any particular Norgard brother, but there was one that blew a hole in the Young's driveway in my neighborhood a while back.
[laughing]
Pretty sure it wasn't you. I know which one it was. I said no names, right?
[laughing]
So, yeah, the Norgards are infamous. Anyhow, a couple of things I'd like to add. We are coming up with a Night to Unite invitation. It's August 1st, starts at 5:45 and goes till about 9:15. It is a celebration of the community and neighborhoods in the community. Councilmembers and myself have the opportunity to travel far and wide and renew acquaintances and meet with people and get a lot of good food. I'd walk and try to work it off, but we would never make the meetings that we promised to attend. But it is... It's a celebration of community. It's a celebration of how proud we are of our city and a celebration of the fact that we can go out and walk and traverse our streets with minimum fear or trepidation or anything else. Notwithstanding what happened over the 3rd and 4th, I think that was an aberration and an out-of-ordinary experience that is going to be resolved by our police force in short order. So, once again, go out on August 1st and celebrate what our community is self and diversified and welcoming to all. The second thing is, and this goes back to public safety, and it's... I've said more than once, I'm not particularly fond of whiners, but I'll whine a little bit in regards to Bloomington and St. Louis Park taking credit for something that our security chief or our police chief actually was one of the primary movers on. And that is the Alternative Pathways to Policing Program. There was a program, I believe, on Channel 5 or Channel 9 last night that focused entirely on St. Louis Park. And I don't want to take away from what they've done, but that was a collaborative effort from three very dedicated police officers that got together and put this program together. And I think a good journalist would have recognized all three parties that started that program rather than taking the lead from St. Louis Park and relying on them as being the leaders of the pack. So, that's my whine for tonight. I promise not to do again for at least the next two or three months. Councilmember Howard?
Well, first off, I just... I'm going to thank Councilmember Garcia on behalf of Calvin. Two weeks ago, Calvin took you up on your suggestion for music in the park. He's having a great time on Tuesdays. And I might have to thank Councilmember Troutman. We haven't been over with Calvin to see those musical instruments yet, so...
Be great.
That's going to be a hit with the little man. Just a few things. We've mentioned the 4th, and I just wanted to thank the 4th of July Committee and everyone who volunteered throughout the city during what overall was a really positive weekend for the city. The parade was an excellent experience to be with folks up here and to see just all the smiling faces and the great turnout from our community for the parade. Although now, two years in a row, we've ran out of candy. We have to commit to having some in reserve or backups. Luckily, this year, we were saved by Councilmember Troutman's son, Justice, who provided entertainment.
Right. He's good for that.
Yeah. The second half of the parade route may have been short on candy, but they were not in terms of getting a good show from the cartwheels. And I think he managed to avoid major injury, too.
What we lost in candy, we made up for in youthful enthusiasm.
There you go. But I know a lot of people... It's a new committee, and a lot of folks had just dove right into a lot of work to put on that event. And so, I just want to thank all those folks for their work. A few other items coming up. We've had a lot of very good community discussion over the last several months around the issues of housing. There's going to be a community forum on housing in Richfield on Thursday. This is July 13th. It's hosted by CAPSH, a Jewish Community Action, Housing Justice Center, VEEP, and others, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at House of Prayer Church. And then, the week following, the council is going to have a work session after our HRA meeting. The HRA meeting's at 7:00 p.m. And so, I believe the work session will likely happen immediately following the HRA to have a discussion as a council around issues around housing. And so, if folks are interested in those issues, I'd encourage folks to attend both of those upcoming meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Regan Gonzalez?
Well, I had four items, but now I am down to one because they were shared already. But I do want to echo the thanks to the 4th of July Committee. I think it was an excellent event, a great weekend. I brought as many people from outside of Richfield as I could and tried to convince them to move here. People just... I love sharing. I said, "You have to come to Richfield's 4th of July." And a lot of people had fun. We had a cookout in our backyard. We enjoyed watching Mayor Elliott refereeing the wrestling match. I don't know if you all saw that, but I think we might be able to share some of those pictures with you. So, the last thing that I want to mention is, coming up on July 29th at 7:00 a.m., if you guys are early risers, we have the 15th Annual Urban Wildlife Half Marathon in 5K. And you can sign up for that at www.urbanwildland.com. And please come. It is a great event where you get to see different parts of Richfield and you get to see some of our neighborhoods as well as our nature. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Next item is, I'm seeking approval of the agenda.
So, moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. The consent calendar usually contains several separate items or treated upon by the city council in one motion. And once a consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and no further action on these items would be necessary. Tonight, I have one item on consent. And that is consideration of resolutions to approve special legislation for the Cedar Avenue and Lindell Gardens Tax Increment Financing Districts. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Item number six is assigned to Councilmember Troutman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Elliott. The item under consideration is the approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit and variance to allow a restaurant on 6436 Penn Avenue. That is a variance to allow a Subway fast-food restaurant to be placed, I believe it's adjacent to the Richfield Liquor Store. This came up due to the timing of when we get our agenda items, you know, pretty recently. And I think we just... The first I saw it was Friday. So, I would respectfully ask that we would table this and continue the consideration of this variance for two sessions. I think it would be till August 8th. Just to... I don't know how the other council members feel, but because it's in the Penn Central Corridor that's right in our ward, I'd like the opportunity to have some conversations with my constituents and the members of the ward to be able to speak into the variance and the store there.
City Attorney, Councilmember Troutman, brought this up, not having an opportunity to be in relatively, well, brand-new to the ward and to the city council, asking for an opportunity to at least visit with the applicant and also talk to his constituents to see what the temperament of the neighborhood is. So, I told him that I certainly would allow him to bring it up and probably ask your opinion as to whether or not it's an appropriate request.
Well, Mr. Mayor and council, I'd also like to get Mr. Stark's input on this, but just legally and procedurally, certainly he could... Is it appropriate to bring a motion to table? If it gets a second and it's approved, that's something the council could do. There are some timing issues with this. I'm looking at the staff report, which indicates that the council must make a decision by August 11th under the law. I would also note, and maybe I'll let Mr. Stark elaborate on this, but I believe that there would have been a public hearing on this item already...
Yes.
On June 26, 2017. So, there already has been some opportunity for public input and discussion on this item.
The only thing I would add, the city attorney is absolutely right on the 60-day rule, that a decision would have to be made by August 11th. However, the city council can extend that 60 days an additional 60 days at your discretion if you need more time. We would just have to notify the applicant of that additional 60 days.
I don't know that that would be necessary, but I would move that we table this matter till the August 8th session.
Is it appropriate to... Is it... Can I ask just a few questions of staff before motion? I'm not sure if table isn't a debatable motion, or is it? Anyways, just a question as to the Planning Commission. Were there folks that spoke in support or opposition at the Planning Commission? And what was the outcome? I'm just curious if there's any... No members of the public spoke, and the Planning Commission unanimously approved it.
Okay.
My position would be, just as a courtesy to the council member, to allow him a sufficient time to at least reach a comfort level with the proposed new restaurant in his ward. So, with that being the case, I would second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, it's tabled. Did we determine the actual date?
Are we two sessions? Is it the August date? Thank you.
Item number seven belongs to Councilmember Regan Gonzalez.
The item for consideration is the approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit and variances to allow a restaurant and cafe to operate at 817 East 66th Street. The property at 817 E 66th Street was previously occupied by Richfield Floral and Garden, which closed for business earlier this year. Local Roots Fine Foods would like to open a restaurant and cafe in the building along with separate retail space. Traditional cafeteria-style restaurants are a conditional use in the C2 general business district. In addition to the conditional use permit, the applicant is requiring approval of two variances. The first variance is required due to the existing zoning designation on the property and is highly technical in nature. The north 125 feet of the property is owned general business, while the south 75 feet of the property is owned multifamily residential. Regarding parcel split between two zoning districts, the code states, "The provision of the code, which pertains to either of the zoning districts, may be applied to the entire lot or for a distance of 30 feet from such district boundary line, whichever is less. The applicant is requesting a variance to extend the C2 zoning district over the entire lot or 75 feet. The south 75 feet on the property was previously a separate lot. To ensure that the south lot could not be sold separately from the building, the applicant was required to combine two parcels. This combination in turn created a current split zoning situation. Prior to the 2008 comprehensive plan, the south lot was also zoned C2. The plan recommended medium-density residential as a buffer between commercial property on 66th Street and the single-family residential properties to the south, resulting in rezoning of the property to MR2 in 2010. However, the rezoning was done without specifically reviewing the existing use of the property as a parking lot related to the commercial property at 817 E 66th Street. Rather than rezone the property to C2 at this time, the comp plan and zoning district designation of the property should be reevaluated as part of the comprehensive plan, which is currently underway. The applicant is also requesting a variance to reduce off-street parking requirement. Local Roots plans to occupy 3,185 square feet of the building, while the remaining 515 square feet would be subleased to an unidentified retail office service user. The total parking requirement is 31 spaces, while only 24 spaces are available on the property. Much of the restaurant area is programmed for uses other than dining, area seating, including space for an art gallery, office and storage space, and a large children's play area. The restaurant is planned to accommodate just 20 seats. Based on these factors, staff does not anticipate a parking shortage. Should a parking demand increase in the future, there are spaces adjacent to the rear parking lot where an existing landscaping area could be converted into up to seven spaces. Staff is not recommending that the additional parking be required to be constructed at this time. Finding that the proposal meets the requirements, staff recommends approval and conditional use permit and variances. And I would... I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution granting a conditional use permit and variances to allow a restaurant and cafe at 817 E 66th Street.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Claims and payroll?
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, we are...
Could it move city manager's report?
Do we do it now or before? Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council. Actually, tonight, I do have a couple of things I want to bring up. We need to start thinking about a date for the budget meeting. And that typically is somewhere around, oh, you know, the last week of August, somewhere generally in there.
hmm, the last week of August, somewhere generally in there. I think what we'll do is we'll get some, Jared will get some dates out to you. And, um, would you please get a look at those as soon as you can and, um, and get back to us on what works for you and what, and what doesn't. As we get, we, we have to do it and, you know, we, we generally get the budget thing done in one evening, so, you know, it'll be a several-hour meeting. And along that same line, we typically have canceled the second regular city council meeting, uh, in the month of August every year. And, uh, so I'm asking the city council if you're thinking about, uh, doing the same thing. Um, what I would propose is that I would bring that item back, uh, to the second, uh, council meeting of July. Uh, so if you want to, if you want to think about canceling that meeting, uh, tell me so and I'll, you know, we can have a, an item there where you actually cancel it.
Do, do we need time to ponder or?
Yeah.
Can we come to agreement as we sit here?
It's, I guess it's a question for staff too, if there are any pending or outstanding things that would really make it necessary to, to hold that meeting or if waiting the two weeks and holding the budget session.
You know, I, I, I don't really think there's anything super critical as to why, you know, you would have to have that meeting. You know, in essence, you're really not getting away from having a meeting. You're replacing one long meeting for, uh, for a council meeting, so, um, it just means that, you know, you'd have one meeting that week instead of two probably. Or, or, you know, I don't know, you know, back in the day, uh, some council members wanted that meeting canceled because they, you know, they planned kind of end-of-summer vacations around that time. And I don't know, you know, as council change, councils change, then, uh, those kinds of priorities change as well. So, think and think about it and, uh, I might bring, I'll bring it back for the next agenda and, uh, council members can decide what you want to do.
Okay, thank you. Um, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3B, uh, at this time, we are moving into closed executive session to have discussions with the city attorney. We shall return.